2021 annual report and the 2022, 23 work plan as well. And I don't know who is going to introduce this. So whoever it is, please take it away.
Good morning, councilors. Brent Davis with Community Development. I'm the DEEP coordinator for this year. I'm just gonna introduce the Chair of DEEP, Jamie Houseley, who will be taking over the presentation. And Jamie, I believe you need to be a panelist. Do you have a presentation to share?
I'm on and it looks like the work plan is up on the screen, as I see.
Right.
And I'm gonna turn it over. Traditional practice here with DEEP is usually let the past Chair, which would be Dan Weisner, kind of go over the what we did in 2021 with accomplishments and then provide some insight. And then I will, I will cover what, what we propose for this, this coming year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan first. With Dan's on.
All right. I think I'm on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we do.
All right. Thank you very much. So my name's Dan Weisner. And my past business was Osprey Homes, built in Clark County for approaching 30 years with my former partner Cory Papenfus. Built about a thousand houses over the last 25 years. And our slogan was affordable quality. So I've got a big background in trying to make things affordable, which I know is a big issue in the county at the moment. But on DEEP, the report that we gave you guys just goes through our past accomplishments. And, you know, I think that they speak for themselves. We worked, we worked well with the staff. The staff is very open for communication at those meetings and we appreciate that. We appreciate not only being, having the opportunity to, to spend the time with them, but also to be made aware of any issues that are going forward and to review things. When I was in front of you guys last year, I heard very clearly from, from Gary that what you guys wanted us to do was to make you aware and for us to be sensitive to issues or areas in which the county was going above and beyond the code or having interpretations of code that made it little things a little more onerous. As we all know, affordability is a big issue. Job creation continues to be, you know, a focus of, of everyone around here as we continue to make, we try and keep Clark County not only livable, but also affordable. So I know that there's a lot of stuff going forward next year, this, or this year, I should say. The Housing Options Committee has been, has been working through a long process and is going to be presenting a lot of options to the board. There is biannual code changes that basically got retired, you know, that, that didn't happen last year due to COVID. And so there's a lot of catch-up work that has to go in there. And there's just a lot of, of, you know, there's a lot of work to become more proactive in making things more streamlined and more affordable and align with, align with, with the county's, the county board's vision. So one of the things that we would like to do is to bring up a couple of different examples, if you will, of, of areas that we have seen to where we believe that, that the code change, the biannual code changes really need to focus on. And that's, again, some of these affordability issues such as I did development, or I tried to attempt a development out in Folita where I tried to put in cottages. And the interpretation that I had, as I read through the code, was different than the interpretation that the staff had. So the difference made it to where, at the end of the day, we dropped our cottage development, which would have been affordable housing in, in Folita, to go back to, you know, what everybody calls McMansions. So part of our, our request to the board would be to see if there was some way to give us direction of what you guys would like to see us to do to, to work with staff, to do like Gary asked last time, to clean up the interpretations or tone them down to make it to where things are more streamlined and easier for the creation of jobs and creation of affordable housing. And I took away a lot of Jamie's thunder, but Jamie, you want to add anything for that?
No, Dan, I think you're doing a great job.
All right, thanks. So is there, as you, is there any questions or things that we can clarify around our, our report to you guys?
Madam Chair, may I ask a general question? Not here. Thank you. So from time to time, we always, or not always, but from time to time, it comes up about individual codes that either don't exist, but are being enforced in our permit process or codes that are interpreted in different ways. The challenge for the council, I think, is, you know, we're supposed to be legislators, but we have no legislative staff to draft and identify what code we may be missing, what codes being enforced even though it doesn't exist, and what code is confusing. So the question gets to be is, where do we get this from? How do we find, you know, code by code, section by section, those issues that are causing so much consternation with the public, with the engineers, with developers, you name it, anyone that comes to the county for a permit runs into this. What, what is the funnel? And what's the best way to identify what codes need to be eliminated, changed? Or the urban legend of their existence eliminated? You know, is it your board that would be the primary source of, of that individual in detail? I mean, we need the detail of what needs to change us to impact it. So general question, general frustration.
So, Councilor Medvedji, it's a great question, I think. It's, and I'll try to digest it into its simple answer and not, not be overly lawyerly here. But part of the, the reason for the creation of the Development Engineering Advisory Board years ago was a way for both the, the public sector, the county and the private sector to identify those, those issues that have, you know, re-propping up again and again and again. And oftentimes they were interpretation issues or processes that both, both sides saw as, as wasteful potentially. That, you know, for instance, minor road modifications. If you kept seeing the same thing over and over and over again, is that a problem with the code? Or is that, is that some way we can get to a simpler decision-making process on? And so the Development Engineering Advisory Board was, was created to have that more direct interaction with, with staff and provide a little bit more immediate feedback on those, those code issues that the practitioners were seeing in, in reality. You know, versus the Planning Commission, which is more of a citizenry body and they're, they're more concerned with the long-term visioning of, of the county. I, I think as the process has evolved, one of the struggles that, that DEEP has seen recently is that the county has had a lot of retirement of a lot of really good people with a lot of good institutional knowledge. And, you know, while of course that, that's what happens with, with life, obviously, you do get a new fresh set of people in here and they may not have the same interpretations as past practices have had. And, you know, a very recent example of that came to our, the Development Engineering Advisory Board just, just last month whereby there was an interpretation of a landscape standard and how that would apply in multifamily development. And it was something that the practitioners out there had been working with one interpretation for decades now. And all of a sudden, new staff had come in and interpreted something differently. Because of that, we, an engineer not on the DEEP board brought that to our attention. We talked about the issue at length during the DEEP meeting and we sent the council a letter basically with a recommendation on what, what we viewed to do. And so it's, it's stuff like that, that I think DEEP plays an important role and we can have that direct line of communication to the, the county council with what, what we're seeing out there. I think that the struggle we have is that oftentimes these decisions are being made and just sprung upon the development community without even seeking our, our input from the beginning. And us, that's sort of counterintuitive to what DEEP is supposed to be there for, which is to try to have that dialogue early and often to get buy-in from both the, the private and public sector and not be in a reactionary mode like we feel like we are now. And on top of that, I'll just express some, some personal frustration. And, you know, I understand that this is totally COVID-related and, and we've, we've had mandates from the state about doing policy work during this time. But I, I feel like part of our charge for 2022 is really going to be focused on the biannual code amendments and trying to get to some of those lingering issues that have been sort of put in abeyance for a period of time, but also really try to hone in on some of these, these other interpretation questions that have, have cropped up where quite frankly, the private sector just has a different view than county staff.
I have a question, Jamie or Dan, whomever. And you could use the landscape buffers as an example if you wanted to, but maybe there's a different example where you haven't already written a, a letter in that regard. I'm just curious, when you find and discuss it at DEEP meetings, some of these differences in the interpretation of code, whether there are differences between staff and practitioners or differences between the, you know, people over time on staff, whichever. How do you ultimately bring process improvement to those matters? So that it doesn't have to be rediscovered and then rediscovered again and rediscovered again, but so that it is fixed?
That's a great question. I'll, I'll take it first and maybe Dan has got a view on this. But typically if an issue crop crops up, that we see a need for process improvement. And I'll use a past example, which I think has been successful. A few years ago, there, because of some change of, of staff, we used to have one staff member at the county that did all of the, the final plat work. And that, that changed and that person's institutional knowledge went away. And all of a sudden we had a new, a new staff person and it created a very large, a lot, a lot of consternation with the private sector who's, you know, trying to get their product to market quicker, which obviously has a benefit of reducing housing costs for us all. But we decided to form a specific work group around that. I believe, you know, Jeff, Jeff Riston on the DEEP board was really instrumental in that. I think Eric Limo was as well, some others. And they worked with the new staff people with, with a lot of good staff to find streamlined processes to make that system move, move faster. And so those are sort of the good instances. I, I think where some of the DEEP frustration lies is when all of a sudden there's a new interpretation of code and it is just sprung on a development community member through a specific application. And then that has to filter its way back to us in order to be raised at that point. You know, from our perspective, it would be better if, if staff is thinking about changing an interpretation, you know, maybe vetting that first with the, the DEEP board before they, you know, hard and fast throw that line down and start requiring that of, of projects that are already in, in process. That, you know, obviously if it's affecting projects already in process, that has implications for their, their pro forma, it has implications for timing. It has implications for, you know, people like Dan that may be vetting future projects. And so that, that's, just to put it bluntly, that's kind of where we're coming from. And Dan may have thoughts on that as well.
Chair, can I, I'd like to circle back because this is what, going back to, this is what I'm talking about. So we're not talking about interpretation. We're talking about clarity of code that can't be misinterpreted. So if, if there's a change in code, I, I think that's the process you're talking about. If there's not a change in code, you have a change of personnel and training and experience, but the code is, lacks clarity and it's being interpreted in a different way. The code then needs to be changed to add that clarity back. So that's the deficit for us as legislators. We don't have staff doing that code work. So if you identify, how do we put clarity back into the code? So we don't have these different or differing interpretations. That's the detail we need. So we can change the code so that it's locked in, in time and does these issues don't keep recurring. So I think, I mean, that would be my focus. Either identify, it may be a training issue for staff, which is up to the manager and those internal processes. Or if the code needs to be tweaked, a few words added or a few words changed, then that's our job. But we need to be kind of spoon-fed what these changes should be to further a policy. So just my thoughts.
Chair Barman, if I may, I, I did want to acknowledge one thing. And historically, the code has been interpreted in different ways. And so they're on the same code and I, I, everybody, I think acknowledges that. April is the new director in Com Dev. She does come with a fresh set of eyes. Does recognize that as well. And I know she is also starting, and I know she's constantly talking to the BIA and to others, but she actually is starting a, a review of certain codes that have had differing interpretations in the past. I don't think there was any intention to spring on a new code without having a conversation. Per the, the charter and the, the development or, or code, she has the final say. And, you know, and I know she wants to work collaboratively with all the industry without a doubt. And so I would encourage those who have, because she has the final say on this, on how to interpret. If there's a concern or a question or something doesn't make sense or we're not being consistent with how we're applying, please raise those to April because she is reviewing those. She is having an intentional conversation with the departments and staff and community members with the intent of potentially coming to council with some suggested code changes. It's one thing if a code's very clear and we've been still miss changing the application or the intention over the year. That's a, that's a staffing issue and that is going to be addressed. But there's also code like Councilor Medvedji said, that's not necessarily clear and it's been applied differently. There is no intention on the county or on behalf of her staff to change something midstream for anybody. But I think having that open conversation, like I said, I know, I talk to April often and she is open to that feedback, wants to work through it, is committed to process improvement because she knows why we're here. She recognizes that we're here to ensure that our community is taken care of in the most efficient way. And so I would encourage everybody on this call to keep that dialogue open with April. And if you haven't been communicating with her directly on this, please go that way because she's, she's on the same page. She wants to have clear code. She wants to have consistent application and interpretation and wants to have a partnership with all of our business partners here in the community to ensure we're doing what's right and the best way. So, thank you.
Kathleen, it, it sounds like she has good communication with BIA, which is important. And, and that's very good. How about with DEEP?
Um, you know, she is on right now, if she can respond to that. So I know she has staff that attends DEEP. I'm, I'm not sure of her thing, but I, you know, just because I have, I've actually talked to her about this last one that was just brought up, the landscaping. And I, and I saw the letter that was sent, but there was actually no request to her as the director to look at the code prior to going to council with the request. And so, and with her having that final say, she's, her lens is what is reasonable and how can we get this to work? And that is, you know, and if it doesn't work, how do we address it moving forward? And so that, that's why I'm bringing this up. It's, you know, you know, she hadn't even been asked for her decision or recommendation on that code prior to the council being reached out to. And it is her decision. And I had actually sent an email to the council asking to respect that process and allow April to review it and have those conversations. But if you, like I know, like I said, April's on and she can explain a little bit more with, about DEEP and what she's doing.
That would be great. And, and, and let's go for that. Just one other quick comment. And that is that there's a lot going on about those landscape buffers right now. Because I brought to you Kathleen something that was different from what was the content of DEEP's letter with regard to landscape buffers. So it seems like when a topic area is being discussed, maybe there could be a process for bringing in the applicable members of the community and our ongoing processes that we have from a group like DEEP that is, is important for continuous improvement. So anyway, I didn't mean to detract from April, but just to make sure that we're, we're wide-ranging and bringing in groups. Is April there now?
I am. I'm trying to start my video chair and it's not working. You can only see my background. So I'm sorry about that. But yes.
We saw the background.
I kept trying. It's not working. Okay. Um, thank you. I, my job and my staff's job is to enforce the code and that's not always the most popular place to be. My goal is to be reasonable. And when these questions come to me, I was at the DEEP meeting and I'm at as many DEEP meetings as I possibly can be. They're actually on the same day as BIA meeting. So that makes it easy. But I, I try to be as reasonable and I research the intent of the code. It's, you know, I try to balance the development community and understand how important they are, but also the future residents of Clark County and the people that might be living in these multifamily, this one in particular, these multifamily residences. So I, and, and I wasn't asked about what my interpretation was about this one specifically. And, and I did, I did just share what my, what my interpretation was just yesterday because, because I was researching it for the last two weeks. So I, and, and I want to be there for the development community and I do want to find a bridge between the two. But sometimes the way we, the way that the interpretation or even my interpretation, it's not always going to be a fan favorite. And, and only because I, I, I don't write the code right now. I enforce it. So if it needs to be changed, I'll enforce that. And I do love the idea that Medjavi said that about DEEP looking at the code and addressing what they do believe needs to be changed and then bringing it to the committee that I have just established that is a code writing committee. Because before, before this, there was one person who basically wrote code, biannual code changes. And so I've created a community or a committee with each, with a representative from each department, from building to development engineering, land use. And that is, that is my main goal. Now that I have E-Plan all settled out, my main goal is to get these code changes into place. And there are some things, you know, there was an interpretation that they brought to me that, that I, that I didn't think was reasonable. And that I did say we shouldn't be holding them to a 20-foot minimum in, I think it was recreational area. So there are times where I'm going to research it and I'm going to look the best I can to interpret what, what I think the code is saying. It's just not always going to be, it's not always going to be a favorite of the development community if it's against what they are wanting, if that makes sense.
So just to, just to play devil's advocate and look at the other side of the coin, I think April sort of is illustrating exactly what the development community's concern is here. And that we have a new personnel in the county who's making a different interpretation that is not consistent with, in some cases, decades of past understanding and practice.
In this certain case though, we did have, we, for sure, and we had inconsistencies in the way this code was interpreted. But it wasn't, it, we have it on both sides. I did have a land use planner that let the two, let landscaping and rec space be combined. And I had one that didn't. And so it was inconsistent for sure. But I wouldn't say that the interpretation was completely different than all of the findings in the last 10 years. There was inconsistency and that's true. And alls I was trying to do in providing an interpretation and all of my staff was trying to do was trying not to have the inconsistencies. I mean, they came together as staff and they brought it to a staff meeting and they talked about it with the total group to try to find what the interpretation and who was doing what. And they're the ones that found the inconsistencies and came to DEEP and said, you're right, we had inconsistencies. But this is the consistent interpretation that we had landed on.
So again, from our, our standpoint, and I'm, I'm going to stick firm on this just because I know this is really important to the, the DEEP members, is that, again, that, that decision, it sounds like, was made, you know, internal with county staff and there wasn't, you know, an external stakeholder there from the development community, either a DEEP member or somebody else to kind of maybe provide a countervailing point. Rather, all of a sudden, the interpretation is different. We're carrying it on a project-specific basis that, that engineer happened to bring it to myself and a couple of other DEEP members. And then we vetted it out at the last DEEP meeting. And I believe that we provided a lot of very good examples directly, I think Mr. Odrin did, of why that interpretation didn't make sense, hence the, the follow-up email or the, the recommendation from the DEEP board directly to county council. So again, I'm, I want to be careful here. I'm sort of just a messenger for my fellow DEEP members. But we're, we are a bit frustrated and perplexed that these decisions are being made behind closed doors when, you know, again, the purpose of the Development Engineering Advisory Board from its, you know, very early inception was meant to be a place of open dialogue to sort of resolve those differences. And if, if it's, you know, we need to have a, a code amendment to get both sides, you know, comfortable with, you know, current practice, then certainly that's, that's something we can, you know, work to achieve. And that's clearly within the, the policy discretion of the county council to decide upon. What we, we, we don't feel is very fair is these decisions being made and then being sprung upon. is these decisions being made and then being sprung upon uh, the development and community midway through the development projects. Um, especially when we're already struggling to try to achieve various very important public goals out there, including affordable housing and employment.
I can understand that a conversation with DEEP would have been helpful. And and I think that from staff's point, they had heard the, that there was conversation back and forth about what um, what the engineer thought was appropriate and and that's why it was brought to a staff meeting. I I am totally, I am totally um, on board to discuss things like this with DEEP in the future. Especially if, when there is inconsistencies and when we think here, this is the, this is, we want to stop the inconsistencies and this is the interpretation we're landing on. I'm definite, I am on board to bring those to DEEP meetings. And um, but also with the understanding that um, they might be discussions and and in the end, a code change might need to happen. And in this case, I think that if you, if you want something different, a code change will need to happen. But I, I mean, I think that that's wonderful. And I think that that's kind of what Medjavi was saying too, was that that DEEP can analyze the code and ask what needs to be changed. And and my code committee, my code writing committee is, that's what they're there for. And they're, you know, it's not just one person, it's going to be eight people now. So that differing opinions are also um, internal for staff as well.
So this is all great discussion. I think this should continue uh, outside of this meeting. Uh, but the point I'm, I just want to circle back to. It shouldn't be interpretation to interpretation, staff to staff disputes out in the community. If there's interpretation wiggle room, then we need code changes. And that's neat, that's the process we need to focus on. If there's a code that needs tweaking, that needs clarity, and that we need to make a policy decision in that code, then it needs to be spoon-fed to us so we can have that policy discussion and then decide on what the code should be. But I I really encourage this kind of discussion, April and and DEEP. I, I mean, you, you should all have, sit around and have some hors d'oeuvres and coffee and really hash this out in greater detail.
I appreciate that, counselor. And um, go ahead, Dan, I'll let you go.
I I was just gonna say, I, I was gonna just focus on the appreciating that that kind of feedback. What I've heard is, you know, that code clarification legislative process is what the council desires. Um, and I, I think that that is a, something that is going to be a big focus for this year. What we just heard from April, what we know has happened in the past. Uh, I know that, you know, the developer side, I'm very creative at trying to and, you know, aggressively interpret the the code uh, for my benefit. I mean, and for the, you know, for the keeping things as affordable as possible. I mean, the more that I can place on, the more houses I can place on a property, the the lower the costs are, which means the lower that, which also means more, more supply, which we all need at the moment. Uh, so the other thing that I wanted to, you know, circle back on was what I heard from council, Councilman Gary last year was that, that got kind of the going above and beyond and make sure that, that that, that's not happening. And I think that this interpretation, what I would request out of the board is just especially with the amount of people that are changing down in the, in the staff is is almost uh, just a directive that at this point, if it's possible, that the interpretation should be as flexible as possible. You know, I'm not asking for any kind of, oh, let's bend the rules. And if the rules may be clarified, I'm all for that. But as we just have heard, this is an interpretation that has been gone back and forth and back and forth. So if we can just get some direction from the board saying, hey, while we're going through this process, try and be as flexible as possible so that all parties you know, can can uh, come to an agreement quickly.
And I would just like to add, um, the interpretation of code isn't necessarily the council's decision. Their, their part in code is reviewing and adopting new code. The interpretation is actually through April and the staff. Um, but certainly if they're, you know, and this is based on our charter. Um, so but certainly, um, and I think you've heard it from April and I think we're all on the same page. And Counselor Mevage, I'm, I'm happy that we're on the same page in that saying she actually has staff now dedicated to reviewing code and having conversations with you guys. So if there is something subject to interpretation, then they, we can bring it forward from the the legislative body to adopt or consider and adopt. But the actual interpretation is actually under the um, it's not a council decision. Um, it's actually falls with April. And so that's where um, pulling her in as soon as possible. And I do know from my conversations with April, again, she does want to make it work. She does want to be reasonable and see how can we make it work for you. But if there's a, if there's a roadblock in the written code, then we need to address that separately.
And just to recognize, uh, which I think we all all do, and I'm sure we would all agree. The the various facets that you just mentioned, Kathleen, they are all interrelated. And so the fact that council is dealing with the policy aspects and the, and all of that, it doesn't mean that we don't care when something doesn't make any, any sense or is, or is too diverse or is unsuspecting or surprising or whatever to our development community. I mean, it all is just, it's hand in glove, you know, it's just so interrelated. So um, we will definitely try to stay in our lane, but it calls for an understanding from the development community as well as from staff.
No, I I don't disagree. I, as you all know, regardless of operations or not, I'm always open to feedback from the council. Um, and
You are.
So I, I'm not concerned about that at all. I just um, want to make sure that, you know, as something rises up, I'm of a believer of let's resolve this at the lowest level. It doesn't, I'm not telling anybody they can't call a counselor, they, I mean, everybody has a right to do that. But let's just try to resolve this at the lowest level. And if there is not a consensus on how to move forward, then we need to look at the code and bring that to council for your consideration. So we're, I think we're on the same page. Everybody, I can say today, everybody is open to the feedback, meaning myself and April and others who are part of this process. And I, we also rely on our partners for institutional knowledge because, you know, we haven't been here. Um, but that's all, there's the flip side, bringing in other new people is a fresh set of eyes and how can we increase that efficiency? But our goal is to help support. Um, and like April said, and enforce the current code. If it doesn't make sense, council can consider changing that and we can bring those recommendations or options to council.
Well, along that, that line, um, Rebecca, would you move it down a couple of pages to the 2022 work plan, please? Uh, maybe up a little bit. Right there, perfect. So um, I, I think what we wanted to to highlight to the council this year is what we anticipate being a very, a very heavy year. Partly due to the fact that, as April had mentioned, hopefully we can get the the biannual code amendments started again. Because I think a lot of the differences that we may be having can be resolved through code clarification. But uh, with that, here's what we would like to prioritize is our work plan for 2022. First is to work with the the county staff on the implementation of the Housing Option Advisory Board's recommendation. Specifically, the, the, I, I guess the development community had very few, I believe only maybe one member uh, that was on the HOAB board. Um, and we feel like some of the recommendations need some, some work there, specifically the cottage code housing requirements. Um, some of the other missing metal issues through mixed use. We, we feel like DEEP could play a work in helping craft code and policies um, that are from, you know, both get vetted through Planning Commission, obviously, but are legislative in nature for the the board's consideration at the end of the day. And so we do feel like we have a lot of good um, thoughtful ideas that have come from other jurisdictions throughout the county and throughout the region that can be uh, implemented as part of that. And so we, we, um, we'll be working strongly on that. Um, the next thing uh, that we plan on working on is the council's well aware of is we've, we've been very actively engaged with the vacant buildable lands model. You know, not only with concerns related to the, the amount of employment land that are out there with the demand for housing as well as some of the resource needs out there in order to have um, development be affordable, such as the, the need of uh, more mineral lands. So we, we propose again, continuing to work with staff on those issues, including um, being a conduit of information to staff and thereby the council directly as what, what we're seeing as concerns in the private sector from the supply chain side. You know, I, I know one of the, the things that had come up uh, early uh, in last year, for instance, was um, it was very hard to get uh, lights from the, the public utility district in order to finalize final plat, for instance, uh, because of supply chain backlogs. And we've had to work, you know, creatively there uh, to allow, you know, development to to come forward as those supply chain issues sort of uh, um, get, get brought back into a more normal pattern. And so we, we do feel like that that's, that's going to be an important task for, for us this year is this, this larger, big picture. What is the land need out there for the county and then what are some of the, the challenges? Um, supply challenges to these, these various things that go into the development work themselves. Um, moving down to the, the next page, um, I, I think this is partly the dialogue that we, we had early on here. But we would like to continue to uh, work with county staff to identify and streamline redundancies in process, thereby reducing both the private sector time that goes into having to maybe check boxes on applications and fill out narratives and so forth. But also sucks away public time and and maybe having to review um, things that are very commonplace. The, the lowest hanging fruit, you know, we can say is, for instance, the, the road mod committee um, internal to the county, you know, maybe there's a way to um, codify things again, make stuff a little bit more, more automatic, so to speak. So it's, we're not, we're not wasting a ton of time for the public and private sector having to to do that. Um, we feel like if, if we can work on together collaboratively on processes and communication, maybe we can develop better, better checklist or better application requirements to try to knock off um, some of the back and forth that occurs. Um, fourth, you, you heard a lot about, I, I think a lot of the development community's frustration here is related to not having biannual code changes for the, the last two years. And, you know, clearly that's, that's been COVID related. Um, but we really do feel like there's a pent-up demand um, on this, on a variety of fronts. Uh, but uh, you know, truly policy-driven that the, the county council may want to address. But some of these interpretation questions that have, have come up where we are seeing inconsistencies. So we really do appreciate hearing from April that there's going to be a dedicated staff members um, to, to work on that. And certainly DEEP would like to, traditionally has had a very uh, early hand in helping staff vet what that code language will be and uh, before it goes to planning commission and the board. And again, we, we view um, that as an important role here in 2022. Um, number five is working with county staff to uh, reduce development timelines. Um, again, we, we feel like there's ways to sort of speed up the process and get uh, product to market much quicker, um, including, you know, creating concurrent, you know, engineering on intel developments. Uh, or in the past, we had talked about creating a list um, of, of master engineers out there in the county. And, and basically, if, if you got this, this approval um, on a list uh, in terms of those, those engineers that have, I, I would hate to say this word, but frequent flyers there at the county. Um, you know, maybe they get a little bit more expedited review uh, in, in the process. And so we would like to explore that as a means of speeding things up again with the eye on trying to reduce um, housing costs and, and create more employment opportunities. And then again, continuing to work with the county to uh, try to find achievable benchmarks um, in terms of trying to get reviews through, um, you know, through, you know, one or two reviews rather than having, you know, multiple reviews going back and forth. Um, we're going to take a, a real effort this year also to monitor the, the past improvements. Um, and, and you know, such as the one I suggested earlier with the, the final plat. Um, and sort of celebrate those things that the public and private sector have sort of come together on and, and found ways to make things better for the public. But uh, also figure ways to implement that, uh, make sure that we're, we're continuing to have those processes be successful. Um, number seven, thi- this one had come up a, a couple of years ago. And it uh, kind of hit a stall with the pandemic, but we would like to, to revisit this. And this would be to work with the Parks Department to allow pocket parks, um, get, get trail networks and other park improvements to be park impact fee creditable. So that the, the county can more quickly uh, meet its affordable goals in terms of putting parks out there. Um, I know that there was a lot of discussion, for instance, when the 179th Urban Holding Area was being discussed about uh, putting a trail network out there. And one of the challenges for the development community is that that's, that's an added expense. And without having that be PIF creditable, it makes it really hard to uh, you know, do from a, a financing standpoint. But if we have that, that tool in place, um, we believe that we can deliver a superior product that will benefit the, the community. And um, certainly that's what other jurisdictions within the county uh, already do currently. And so there is precedent for that. Um, number eight would be to continue to look for areas where the county requirements are, seem to be higher than what may be mandated by, by state law um, in order to reduce um, both the staff time and or cost that the, the, the private sector has to, to put into that. And, and um, we feel that there's some examples out there that we've experienced, especially in the last couple of years that can certainly be addressed through the, the biannual code process. Uh, but you know, hopefully we can have that done this year. So um, with that, I'm going to rest my comments and I'll, I'll see if Dan has got any further additions.
Ma- Madam Chair, I, I just want to go back to number seven. Because as a matter of process, so our Parks Commission had, was working pretty aggressively on that PIF issue as well years ago. Uh, and I, I participated in some of those meetings by lurking on them as a council member. So the process question is this. Where is it? You know, why do these proposals take years to ever resurface uh, at a level where a decision is made on whether uh, trails and things like it could be PIF creditable? I, I'm pretty confident that the Parks Commission, made up of a lot of stakeholders. Um, one of the better commissions we have substantively. I believe they supported it fully. Uh, yet it's, it's been at least a year and a half, maybe two years that that idea was being actively talked about. And then radio silence. This is the first time I've seen it mentioned, uh, Jamie, um, in this presentation. So I'm just wondering, as, as a matter of process, where does this stuff go? To just drop off? To just drop off a cliff into a deep?
Yeah, and I I don't, I don't, I don't want to be, I I think it kind of fell off the COVID COVID cliff. And, you know, you 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 guys and all other jurisdictions were were put in the policy penalty box, so to speak, from, you know, making a lot of code changes, and there were other priorities, certainly. But now that that biannual code process is planned to start up again, we we want to reiterate that point, number seven, that this this was something we felt had a lot of buy-in, both from staff and the Parks Commission, but also the development community. And we we want to make this a priority and bring it to the the county council attention as part of the biannual code amendments to make this stuff PIF credible. And then you guys can make a policy decision whether or not that's a worthwhile effort or not. And hopefully, you you do agree with that. Dan, did you have anything?
Yeah, I I would just wanted to thank the the council for taking the time to listen to our lively discussion that we had today. But I wanted to finalize it with the takeaway that we, you know, we on D believe that this has been a, it's very collaborative, successful board that that meets and has a lot of good discussion, a lot of good ideas, and a lot of positive actions that occur out of it. And by no means do I want to make it sound like, you know, there's any animosity that's going on. I I believe that exactly what April said is true, that that there's a lot of discussion that goes on. So I just want to leave that with you guys, that it's it's a good group, and it's a good group from both sides of the table.
Yeah, and I'll, I would like to echo Dan's statement. And as somebody that works on both sides of the river, I always hold the Development Engineering Advisory Board up as an excellent example of a public-private sort of partnership in in terms of trying to find a good dialogue to sort of vet differences and address things out there that have mutual benefit. And, you know, I I think it's a a very good board. And, you know, we really appreciate the opportunity to come and give our presentation to the council and update you on what we did last year, which was a lot, but also give you sort of a preview of what we anticipate going forward this this coming year.
Well, thank you very much for doing this. This is a very, very ambitious list of things that you have presented for your plan. So we'll look forward to seeing how that goes. Before we change subjects, are there any other comments from or questions from council? Nothing? Okay, well, thank you all very much. We appreciate this, and we look forward to more collaboration, too. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bye.
At this point, I would like to ask council, it is 10:24.